Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. This is the regular meeting of the Council of the City of Southfield for Monday, December 12th, 2011, Madam Chair, please come on.
Thank you. Ms. Jordan, here. Mr. Fraser.
Here.
Mr. Bertassi.
Here.
Mr. Seiger.
Here.
Mr. Moss.
Here.
Ms. Lee.
I'm here.
You have seven members present.
Thank you. First item on the agenda is the presentation of three members to the Emergency Management Volume Two program. That's the mayor's conclusion.
Good evening, to the listening audience, our honorable council. Tonight, I would like to call up Mr. Frank Coop and two of our new volunteers. Thanks to the council and administration for supporting the Emergency Manager, Emergency Management Volunteer Program. I want to introduce our newest members who have joined us, Ray Moore, who holds your hand, Ray, and Ryan Brown. We have another new member, Ms. Bobby Reed, who, for very good reason, she's been unemployed for a long time, and tonight, she got a job tonight, it's her first night in a new job, so she will be here with us tonight. Our volunteers perform many tasks in our Emergency Management Program. They are very important, they do all of what they do without pay. I have been very committed to volunteers in this department by charter, which is reports at the opportunity to appoint the director. They help us at community events and city events, and they're trained to respond and assist in disaster incidents in our community. There's a lot of training that goes into these volunteers, and we're very honored to increase our number of volunteers. Our program of volunteers is a 50-year-old program, and annually donates over 2,000 hours of community service. Many people cannot donate their time, and that makes those who volunteer very special citizens. And our residents and communities benefit from our volunteers. Some believe that the volunteers are the core of our city, they add to the character, the safety, and the quality of our life and our community. It's a great pride tonight that I recognize those who have recently joined our program. But the one thing that I do want to say is that we need more people. The more people who volunteer, who help in our boards and commissions, and on this wonderful Emergency Management Team that we have, who are trained to assist the city in a case of emergency, is what we need. We have a very active radio, AM radio.
Amateur radio.
Amateur radio program. Because you know, those of us who went through the power outage a few years ago, the amateur radio became a very handy tool in our city. So if you're willing to volunteer, have the time, and want to do something to give back to the city, I encourage you to contact our director, Mr. Frank Coop, who's here, at (248) 796-5990, or check on our webpage for more information. At this time, I want to introduce Mr. Frank Coop, and let him have his word.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Madam Council President, I'm Frank Coop, the Emergency Management Director, and I'd like to reiterate some of the words the mayor said, that thank you, council, for your support over the years of the Emergency Management Program, and all the components within, one of them being the Emergency Management Volunteers. We enjoy a cadre that fluctuates between 30 and 40 people, who give their time to serve the community. They meet at least once a month, they train at least once a month, they're ready to, on request, help assist our public safety, they're trained in some basic things like search and rescue, basic first aid, debris removal, so therefore hands and bats to help when needed in a disaster event. Once again, thank you for your continuing support. I personally would like to welcome Ray Moore and Ryan Brown, and she couldn't be here for, like the mayor said, today's a good day for Ms. Bobby Reed, her first day of work. Thank you all for your support.
Let's get them all on. Madam Chair, if you will allow me, I just wanted to start this process. The recent election, we had a sitting councilwoman who was appointed to the council, Ms. Lenny Taylor, who stepped up and asked her to serve, and we've never officially said, "Thank you," of the badge, or to tonight, I just would like to say to Ms. Lenny Taylor how much I appreciate your service, how we really respect you for serving the community, you've always been there, and while the election says something different, we know your heart and your dedication to the city remains strong, and I just want to personally say thank you. Public service is not easy, sitting in that seat is one that, as you know, requires a lot of sacrifice, but I just wanted to publicly say thank you.
Good evening. I just would like to say thank you, Madam Mayor, and I want to say thank you to all of the council. I really have grown over the last two and a half years, and it's been my honor to serve the City of Southfield, and to learn to serve with you, so thank you very much.
I agree, and it was a pleasure to serve.
Thank you.
Me too.
Next, we have, it's Ms. London Neighbors, here. Presentation by Ms. London Neighbors on the Field Zone.
Good evening, City Council members, and Madam Mayor. I would like to thank Council President Seymour for inviting me to make this presentation about the Field Zone. Thank you very much. I would like to give you the details on our very first jazz concert benefit for our Field Zone. We are trying to move up in the basement, spread our wings a little bit, become a show, compliment Fraser, and I would also like to say, compliment Seiger, that we are reaching out to the community by way of selling our tickets and ads to our event, which is December 17, which is Saturday, this coming Saturday. It is an event where we will have four jazz acts, one of them is Katie J Trio, Frank Lee, who the vocalist, John Arnold Trio, and also our very own Southfield Jazz Ensemble. Tickets start at $30, and our event starts at 5:00 and ends at 8:30, and I hope to see you all there. You have been so supportive thus far, and I continue to appreciate you as all those members at the Field Zone and our board of directors for your continued support. I look forward to seeing you there on Saturday, and if not...
You got my check, didn't you?
Yes, I did. Ms. Neighbors, tell them when to come.
Our event is in the Field Zone, 26,000 Evergreen Road, right underneath...
Which is the building.
Right underneath this building, next to the Police Department, across from the law court, the old library, as we like to call it, down in the basement, which has been remodeled and very nicely renovated.
And it's beautiful, and it's beautiful.
And it's beautiful, yes it is.
So I hope everyone can be talking to the voice. This will be shown tomorrow, because the equipment allows us to final cast and be replaced, so I hope that everybody tunes in.
Yes, we do.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Ms. Neighbors.
I'd like to move the minutes of regular meeting of September 26th, to meet a whole meeting of October 17th, regular meeting of October 24th, and special meeting of November 1st of 2011.
Support.
I would like to propose to support, Madam Chair, all in favor?
Aye.
In the United House, motion is carried. Next, we come to Consent Agenda, and I'm going to read the deciding order for the viewing audience. Consent Agenda, Item A, is authorization to enter into an agreement with the United States Department of Interior for the temporary relocation of Beach Road Stream Gauging Station. This relocation is required for our public works group to reconstruct and improve the Beach Road Bridge over the Rouge River. The function of the stream gauging station is to measure and monitor the depth and flow in the Rouge River for flood control and other geophysical conditions. These functions will be maintained during construction by temporarily relocating the stream gauging station. The Army Corps of Engineers will accomplish the relocation. The funding is 95 percent or $23,940 from the Michigan Department of Transportation, and 5 percent or $1,260 from the major street budgets, for a total project cost of $25,200. Item B is a technical adjustment to the Intergovernmental Agreement, or Police Department Grants, from the U.S. Department of Justice. These grants have provided funding for various pieces of equipment and updated technology. The grants are through Oakland County acting as a physical aiders. The City of Pontiac was an original participant and a signatory of the original agreement. Since Pontiac no longer has a separate municipal police department, and the Oakland County Sheriff Department now provides Pontiac's police protection, changes in the text of the agreement have to be made. Council approval for initiating these changes is required, with set amendments to the agreement being subject to review and approval as to form by our City Attorney's Office. Item C is the formal acceptance of $150,238,000 in funding of the Mobile Authority for Regional Transportation, also known as SMART, to help support our transportation program for Southfield seniors and physically or mentally challenged persons of all ages. This includes transportation to medical appointments and other everyday needs of our residents who have no other means of transportation. Because the $156,238 figure from SMART represents a decline of $24,434, or 13.5 percent in SMART funding, a transfer of past year's money in the activity that were accumulated in years when SMART revenues were higher, we also recommend that you fully fund this program for the remaining six and one-half months left in fiscal year 2011, 2012. Item D, excuse me, Item D is authorization to enter into an agreement with the Michigan Department of Transportation, for that state agency to fund the city's cost performance monitoring of the Bridge Street Bridge, which abuts eight miles between Telegraph and Beach Road, excuse me, between Telegraph and Beach Road, for a nine-year period, one year rest of activity, and the next eight years going forward. By way of review, to both assisted business communities adjacent to the bridge, and serve the interests of advancing the field of civil engineering as it relates to bridge construction, safety, and maintenance, the City of Southfield led the way in designing construction of the first of its kind dual modular construction bridge, with side-by-side lanes. Traditional bridge technology on the one side to be compared in durability and overall costs to the newer carbon fiber technology on the other side. This agreement for nine years of end-up funding ensures that the computerized data collection and analysis from the compound of bridge will continue, at no further cost to our taxpayers, to add to the body of knowledge necessary to help address bridge construction and rehabilitation challenges across the country. Our public work staff is to be commended for their advocacy, which was a key component in achieving state funding to support the site of research. Item E is adoption of the recommended resolution to establish year-end fund allowance allocations in accordance with Government Accounting Standards for Pronouncement 54, generally accepted municipal accounting principles, and the financial policy of the features of the City of Southfield. This is one of the final steps necessary for the timely and complete filing of the city's annual audit with State Treasurer. Item F is authorization for city staff to initiate a competitive bid process for the sale of the Franklin Orchard Condominiums, which originally came under the ownership of the City of Southfield, to facilitate major road improvements. The response to this bid process will come back to City Council for formal review and consideration.
Madam Chair.
Ms. Jordan.
I made the motion and we approve Consent Agenda Item B, A, B, C, D, E, and F. It's worth...
I support my motion, my Ms. Jordan, and support Mr. Leiger. All in favor?
I think one question on... Do the chair to Mr. Shurek. Consent Agenda Item B, this is strictly a share of money, there's no other money to be transferred, or anything that's stolen?
Yes, no, through the chair. I heard the voice, I'm working on it. Yeah, it's a technical adjustment to the agreements that were with the Department of Justice. We have to go back, because the ownership of the signatories, the City of Pontiac has to be relocated and Oakland County inserted. There are a number of other technical changes go with it, but that's basically it, so there is no change in the allocations, and no change in the ownership the city retains of what it got out of the grant in terms of equipment, and we just need to hit the agreements in line with the new relationships between the entities. Thank you.
I'd like to point out on Consent Agenda D, the Bridge Street Performance Monitoring Program, this eight-year extended performance period is at no cost to the city.
That's correct, thank you very much.
All right, we have a motion by Ms. Jordan, Department of Justice, all in favor?
Aye.
All in. Motion is approved. The General Public Attorney, the Member of the Press Plan, Council.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Fraser.
I move that we approve the expense report for Jeremy Moss for the MMLs, and he'll be a licensed official's training in Lansing. Support.
Motion by Mr. Fraser, supported by Mr. Seiger. All in. Thank you.
Madam Chair, there's no signature as to the individuals filing this expense report. No date, no signature.
If I may, through the chair, I apologize, the wrong copy must have been included in the page, if there was a signed form that was dated in the...
There was a signed form.
There is a signed form, and it was dated, this is the wrong copy, but it's not in the page, I apologize.
Was the account number right, wasn't it?
The account number is for Councilman Moss, that's correct. Account number, I'm not on here.
No, I'm just wondering what you reviewed and approved, and I see you signed it, I don't see the individual who traveled signed it.
Doesn't have to be signed by a person, it's...
Yep.
So then you might work.
Through the chair, the account number is accurate.
Okay. All right, we have them all, excuse me, motion by Mr. Fraser, Department of Justice, all in favor?
Aye.
All in.
I'm opposed, because it's not signed by a person, I filed this expense report.
All right, still not in the...
Same.
And Mr. Moss does the same. Next, we come to the mayor's question.
Hold on, we have council.
All right.
We have council.
I'm sorry.
I would like to reiterate what I said earlier this evening about moving forward and forming a committee or a fund to move forward on the Carpenter Lake Project.
Well, there is a requirement in the Charter, I believe, in this thing, with that exception, if we want to establish a fund and separation, we... There is a...
Well, I'm asking, President, to say, we make that happen, and I can put that in the motion if I need to.
I mean, the parents accept that...
The Charter does require that the council may establish a trust to receive money, property, and so forth, for specific purposes. I think it probably would anticipate that there would be funds that have been solicited at a time that you're ready to set funds, you would say, you need to keep these funds and set up a trust. You know, I don't think there's an inquiry that you set up a trust before you even want to set up a trust.
But if you approach somebody, you need to tell them where the donation should go, so, you know, I don't want to give the chicken before the egg argument, but it would be helpful to have the fund established, and flesh out the plan a little bit more, as to exactly what we're doing.
I agree, well, you have an offer of $100,000 that we can't accept knowing yet.
Then it could... And you're ready to start setting funds, would be appropriate to establish a trust, if council agrees with this?
I would definitely support establishing a trust, but I would also like to see a volunteer committee, a friends of Carpenter Lake, someone of others' kind, who...
That's... That's not helpful, I think the main funds would be ready to provide city staff, or whoever, we managed to do that.
It certainly, the group, if there was a group called Friends of Carpenter Lake, they could be a nonprofit, finance the trade, and they could also collect funds.
Right.
But I, you know, after all, the city does have some cachet in these matters, and there'd be people that I think that would perhaps...
Respond.
Respond to the city, rather than volunteer groups, not necessarily so, but one way or the other.
I don't have any problem with, you know, nonprofits being funded by politicians, but this is a separate...
Through the chair, we have a meeting set for next Monday. Okay, would you like that on the agenda, to discuss as to how we should go about it?
That would be helpful.
That would give the legal staff and others an opportunity to take a look at the different options.
So what are suggesting, Mr. Seiger, is just suggest what we can do?
Yes.
We focus on the agenda and establish a fund specifically for the focus of funding the...
Interpret...
You want to do this one?
Madam Chair, I agree, but I think we ought to do more than just establish a fund. I think one of the things that was pretty apparent to me tonight was, everybody had their own interpretation of what the plan was. I think we need to crystallize on the plan, that we're going to collect money, and what we're going to do with it, how it's going to work, and everything else. I think that needs to be flushed out at our meeting, so I think it goes beyond just establishing the buckets for the money.
That's a separate, that's a separate thing.
No, I think it's, I think we need to do it.
I'm not...
I think that tomorrow, and Monday night, next Monday?
I'm not just agreeing with you, but you still need to establish a fund, otherwise we might lose the money that's offered to it.
I understand it, I understand it.
All right.
But I think we need to do both.
So let's put this, do we need a motion? We don't, we don't, so focus on the agenda, we're putting it on the table.
Another question, Madam Chair. Madam Chair, to the administrator, we had a million-two, less than the city portion, that was already to be donated, what accounts would that have gone into? In other words, is there an account already established, because there were grants to a million-one already offered to the city and were turned down, so...
Through the chair, if we had planned to construct, it would have been with the building authority, and the funding would have been through the building authority.
Would that...
That's not where we are right now. Where we are right now is a fundraising mechanism, so I'm not sure what, how we would do that. That's why I think we need some time to determine how we would do that.
What would be the goal for this so-called fundraising group to raise, to 2.4 million?
That's what we need to find.
Good question. We have to start with where we are now, what's been committed in parks and rec budgets, deduct for the, for the grants at this point, and decide on how we, how we're going to go forward.
Just to write on the schedule, or if I...
Oh, this is the COW for the Field Zone. It's a, it was one item agenda, the Field Zone.
Right.
And so, I just thought maybe at least we could start the discussion at that point, I'm not sure, you know, whether we could get all the details worked out, but I thought we should start the discussion, and so we only have one item on that agenda.
Madam Chair, Mr. Shurek, what happens to the grants money that were coming to that to contact these individuals, and...
We need, we need to contract, contact the granting authority, which we will do immediately, and indicate that the project has been deferred, so that that grant would, in essence, expire. The second grant hasn't been accepted yet, $140,000, so we have to tell a granting agency to, that's the EPA, so we have to contact the State of Michigan, the, and the EPA about the two grants.
So we're about to turn back this $100,000, two weeks.
That's, that's what we would need to do.
All right, so the agenda of the meeting. Next, anything else, council?
Yes. Yeah, I just want to give a brief, I guess, introduction of myself to the viewing audience, and to the audience here in the chamber tonight. I'm happy to be serving here. You can contact me at any time, not only at City Hall, but on my email address, which is jmonk@cityofsouthfield.com. You can search for me on Facebook, and hope to just be in constant connection with the members of this community.
All right, any other questions?
Yes, to the viewing public, we all know that there was a horrible tragedy in our city, and a distant fabulous woman, who I personally adored, Helen Gill, lost her life, but I do want to say that the city came together and had a celebration of Helen Gill's life. She was a woman that was truly a part of Southfield, she was a neighbor of mine, and I truly adored her, celebrated her life, she was a phenomenal woman. And I do just want to say to the, to the public, never have there been a time when a person's life is taken and that you can explain it, but I will tell you that we are diligent in our police investigation to do everything we can to find the people responsible, and to make sure that we bring them to get there, just to... To the family of Helen Gill, I think it was evident to them in the celebration of life how much we adored her and cared about her, and her memory lives on, and she put a smile on a lot of our faces, we took... We, while we grieve her loss, we are so blessed that she was a part of the Southfield City family, and she made a difference in our community. I also want to say that I had actually to enjoy the Grand Oak Hill Dual Restaurant, it's a phenomenal new addition to our community. The decor is amazing, the food is excellent, it's on No Western Highway. I do encourage that we increase our restaurants in our city, that you go out and enjoy it. It was really, you will be in for a treat, and congratulations to the, to the young, young men, again, the youth of our community stepping up and making a difference, and so I'm very proud of them. I just wanted to comment on establishing that committee for the Carpenter Lake Interpreters Dinner. Again, I really would like to, not like, I would like, I'm proposing to the council that we do have an opportunity to partner with other communities, and as you know, on the dashboard that the government set up would be a credit for collaboration, and we would miss an opportunity if we didn't bring the neighboring communities together, you could do that as a council, to talk about the opportunity, or direct, our director or administrator, to sit down with the administrators and the neighboring communities... or administrator to sit down with the administrators and the neighboring communities and see if there's an opportunity for collaboration. That sends a strong message for us, um, understanding what kind of, what, where we are as a state is something, again, that, um, our governor-elect, um, has said that he is really pushing what actually the credit part of state share revenue is presented to you there. So, and also the opportunity to partner with, um, Oakley County. So, I would think we would be most, if we just went out and fundraised for this, if we did look at opportunities for collaboration, it's not...
Um, anything to elaborate on the question?
I'd like to respond on the collaboration. I do think we should explore it at least because we have the opportunity to set the form of the state treasure shortly. And, uh, that is one of the things of the intent to explore collaboration is all that needs to be shown. So, I think we should, uh, at least explore it so that that's part that we can submit to get our second portion of statutory state share revenues.
Um, Mr. Fercus, we have nothing to add. Uh, first, your planner, if that's your area, what do you call these, uh, headquarters?
Yes, um, but before we get to the liquor license request, since this is the last meeting of the year, I would like to wish everyone a very happy and healthy holiday season and may two thousand and twelve bring faith and hope, peace and love to you and your loved ones.
What's your opinion on the nineteen?
Well, you haven't approved it yet, so hopefully, well, I don't know. So, this is the last televised meeting. Um, the next segment before you, Council, is the liquor license request. This request was at your regular meeting conducted as a committee, the whole meeting on December 10th. This request is a liquor license application from H W G Investments doing business at Hurricane Grill and Wings Restaurant. The restaurant is located at two nine eight five two Northwestern Highway. This is a simple transfer from one owner to the other. Um, I believe the attorney that was representing the petitioner this evening, Mr. John Carlin, is not present and, or he was present earlier, but he left. And is the petitioner here? I don't think the petitioner is present either.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Fercus.
I approve the liquor license request to be approved for H W G Investments. Support.
Uh, motion by Mr. Fercus, supported by Mr. Lance. All in favor, if you can sign that.
Aye.
Followed. Madam Chair.
Thank you, Council. And then the next request before you is a request to schedule a regular meeting conducted as a committee, the whole meeting for next month, December nineteenth, two thousand and eleven, at eight o'clock P M. Is the council counting?
Eight o'clock?
I'm sorry, seven o'clock P M. I apologize.
So, Madam Chair.
Support.
Mr. Fercus, supported by Mr. Frazier. All in favor, if you can sign that.
Aye.
Followed the motion, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
We're not going to schedule, um, we have an ordinance to enact, Mr. Crowe, which you can be on.
Madam Chair. I approve that we, I approve that we, an act, ordinance number fifteen eighty-eight. Support.
Motion by Mr. Frazier, supported by Mr. Stiber. All in favor, if you can sign that.
Aye.
One, two, fifteen eighty-eight. It's an action. All right. Uh, now we come to, um, patient questions. And the first, um, name on this list is Mr. Robert Lecouf. I think he was here early, there's some feeling here.
Yes, ma'am, I am.
Apologize for the language.
It's quite all right. Good evening, honorable counsel, Madam, Madam Mayor and extended staff. Once again, my name is Robert A.M. Lecouf. I'm the Executive Vice President of the Southfield Police Officers Association. My current address is at S. Wallace, two 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 zero six East Twelve Mile Road in the city of Saint Clair Shores, Michigan, the zip code there is four eight oh eight one. I'm currently assigned to the Uniform Patrol Division here in the city of Southfield. I've been here for the last fifteen and a half years approximately. I primarily respond to nine one one calls within the city that, that deal with a variety of runs such as alarms, domestic disputes, robberies, accidents, so on and so forth. I'm here to speak on behalf of the union on two other issues. Earlier, we spoke of the Carpenter Lake. The remaining two issues that I have to discuss are health care and the village. I was very pleased to hear by several council members that we're well-funded and not under much distress currently. In September of two thousand and eleven, Senate of seven was passed by the House and the Senate in Lansing and, and signed by the governor in which public safety was now responsible for twenty, or, in, in which public safety was responsible for an eighty twenty plan in which twenty percent of the health care would be pushed off onto the employee or a heart cap or a possible opt-out of the plan and a loss of some revenue sharing. For the first time in history that I'm aware, police officers in the city are being forced to spend a portion of their bi-weekly paycheck in order to maintain health care benefits for themselves and family members. Over many contracts throughout the years, long before I was here, police health care was formed and fought for to maintain. The city has chosen to opt for the heart cap, which is at an even greater savings, in our belief, due to the fact that we're self-insured. At times when Oakland County and Warren has opted out or formulated, formulated a plan in order to make it work for their employees, we have not here. Back in October, those effective deductions began, uh, the, the effective deductions were put in place and employees were charged on a bi-weekly basis to keep their health care. Digressing back for a moment to June in two thousand and eleven, the House and Senate also passed Public Act fifty-four, which the governor signed, which froze wages, vacation and longevity benefits for those unions that were out of contract and which we currently are. From June through December, increases were provided to those employees and members. A grievance was filed at the, at the advisement of our business agent at the P O A M involving the benefit plan year in which Blue Cross has stated to us begins in October and ends in September every year. December's holiday check reflected that vacation time was taken back by the city and hourly increases were also reduced to June's levels. The affected parties at that time were eight police officers, four supervisors and four dispatchers. Throughout the last week, when this previous holiday check came out, there were several inconsistencies in payroll, which has since been corrected. We view this as a, we, we view this issue as a bullying tactic. We have filed a second grievance on behalf of the union with violating the contract and the bargaining agreement during three twelve arbitration. To the best of my knowledge, over the last twenty-seven years, from what I can locate and I can be corrected if that's the case, but open enrollment was from October through September, as I earlier stated. We've confirmed that, we've confirmed that fact with Blue Cross once again. However, the police officers' union was the only union that had open enrollment during December so we could include January's increases in the health care. What I'm curious to know is that, is the, is the actual benefit plan year for the following year going to take place in October for the increases? Or will it take place in January of two thousand and thirteen for health care increases or possible decreases if the health care, um, benefit goes down? The other thing I'd like to address is on May fourteenth of this year, our Chief Joseph E. Thomas retired. At that time, we appointed three police chiefs, temporary police chiefs, and four fire chiefs because at that time we had no fire chief. Those individuals received five percent, five percent pay increases, which brought them over to a hundred thousand dollars plus, when to the best of my knowledge, there was a thirty-day window that could have been utilized prior to them receiving those five percent increases. However, the pay increases were made effectively. I can't understand how it takes seven chiefs to run a city of this size. I believe we have quality employees within every department within this city here and I'm very proud to work for this city. I've been here for fifteen and a half years. When I left the city of Detroit back in October of nineteen ninety-six, I was proud to come here because it was a city that was premier for me to work for. I did it because I loved the job and I continue to love the job. Everybody throughout the city continues to do more with less. We understand that. Many other departments are running short at this particular time. Being a police officer for this city is a twenty-four hour, a day, seven day operation. We don't close. We always respond and we do the work that no one else wants to. We do it because we love it and we've learned to improvise and adapt and overcome the many situations throughout the years and we will continue to do it. We're a strong group of warriors and we are a band of brothers that work for this city and we continue to do our best for each and every one of you. The last issue that I want to briefly bring up involves the millage. The millage was settled and passed overwhelmingly by the people in the city, by eighty-three percent to the best of my knowledge. At that particular time of the millage, we were twenty-five individuals short between the police and fire departments and approximately a hundred and forty-five city employees shy. As I speak to you today, we are currently short twenty-six police officers to include the chief of police and thirteen with the fire department and approximately two hundred employees citywide. In pulling this, uh, fact, I pulled this off the city fact sheet. In addition, and it basically states, in addition to the twenty-five unfilled police and fire positions, the city has also cut a hundred and forty-five positions at that time over the last seven years. If the millage proposal fails, the further cuts that will be necessary to balance the budget will involve layoffs of approximately fifty percent of police and EMS personnel. Even though the millage did pass, Mr. Scherr was quoted as stating costs will still need to be cut for the next three years at two point five percent. At what point, I guess the question I have at this point for council is at what point are these positions that are vacant going to be filled?
Excuse me, Mr. Lecouf, but I just got reminded that I let you go a little time and I had to continue in five minutes.
All I would ask is that I could, if I could close, I'm closing. I'm done speaking on behalf of any item. I would just ask that you would reconsider these issues and in closing, I want to take this moment to once again thank the honorable counsel, Madam Mayor and extended staff and citizens for this opportunity to discuss these pressing issues that are of great importance to the men and women of this police department. And I'd like to wish everybody a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year to, uh, you as well as all the other city employees and God bless you all. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Madam Chair. I gather respect our police department coming before us and telling us of their feelings towards certain issues. However, we are in negotiation. I'd sure like to hear from our city attorney whether we are, um, setting precedent here or, or how do we proceed? And his questions being asked, and we cannot answer.
Well, through the chair.
And we kind of being sitting here like ducks on a...
Right. Through the chair. Several of these issues, uh, are, are actively within the grievance resolution process under the collective bargaining agreement. Um, we've also received correspondence from, uh, the attorney for the P O A M, um, that, you know, there may be some litigation in terms of unfair labor practice, something along those lines. So, obviously, in terms of this forum, I think the appropriate forum is, is set forth in the collective bargaining agreement. We're, we're actively under that in terms of these issues and that's the appropriate forum to, to address these.
So, my question is, do we sit here like ducks on a pond and just listen or, or refer everything that is being brought up to our negotiating team?
Well, I think we are aware of the negotiating team of the issues and, and we are, again, those kinds of issues are being addressed within the appropriate, appropriate forum.
Okay. Thank you.
But these, these people have asked of me and we have granted them permission, but I understand the confidentiality, uh, statement, but, um, and I, I should, I should mention, I suppose, and follow to your comments, two of the, uh, members of the, uh, police department are here. First of all, I think people have to know, our, our employees have to know that we have always supported, um, the benefits for the best of, of everyone, but we're part of them. Um, we appreciate all of the quality service that our departments have, um, quality of service and the quality of people that work for us. But a lot of these things are the result of things that's going on with the Capitol. And I just, for the record, want to read a statement following what our city attorney has said, um, and, and response that the legal department has provided. Uh, as you know, the issues that you are raising are currently the subject of dispute resolution proceedings established with the collective bargaining process or mandated by the United States laws and cannot be responded to in this forum. However, we want to point out that the city's position relative to these employee benefits have been negotiated with and accepted by five other bargaining units within the city along with other non-union groups covering four hundred and seven city employees, every three hundred of which are union members. Having said that, again, I want to repeat that we've always supported the general best for our city and we're happy to do so. We are, the city are in the dispute resolution and collective bargaining process. I can't comment, but, uh, unfortunately, the state is doing, affects a lot of what's happening to you right now.
Madam Chair, I didn't mean the question to the city attorney to, to in any way, uh, deny these individuals the right to get up here and speak.
I, I understand.
So, I just want to make that clear that they're all welcome to come up here and, and say whatever they want. I want to be clear of what I can and cannot say.
We can't respond, but you're asked about that. But I'll give you that, Chair.
Due to the lateness of the hour, I think we really need to respect our time and the time of the citizens that are supposed to be as well. And we need to make everybody contain to...
Goodbye, Mr. [inaudible]. Right. Um, the next request is one known, Brownwich. I hope I pronounced that correctly to you here. Apparently not, Captain. Uh, Mr. Murray Henry. Madam Captain? Uh, Julius.
Uh, decline, uh, decline my opportunity. Thank you.
Don't decline, all right, Julius. Uh, Mr. Gerald.
I will accept my opportunity.
You know, those, you know, with the investigation, we're getting a five minutes.
As you've often stated, Madam Chair, I come before this council quite often, more than most residents, and I think it's safe to assume that I understand the procedure and protocol, but thank you for your memory to remind me of that. Um, I just wanted to say real quickly that if my presence coming before this council causes a negative reaction to anybody sitting up there, or if your significance is diminished by my facial expression, you have given me the power. And tonight, Mr. Fercus, you gave me the power and I'm not even trying to get it. You know, the chairperson of this council meeting said to stay focused on the Carpenter Lake issue. You couldn't even stay focused on the issue for being focused on Pamela Gerald. So, you give me significance and you make me relevant to come before this council and speak on behalf of what I believe in and the people of Southfield because I'm one of those people. So, I want to get right into the point. Madam Chair, you talked about the consistency of the agenda and the way we do things. You said tonight, quote unquote, that you don't have to give your address, that you could give it to the city clerk. And you made two of the people that spoke on the Carpenter Lake issue give their address. And I agree with the mayor, possibly, I think you did it because you wanted to bring attention to the fact that they didn't live in the city. But if they worked in the city and for the city, their address is not important. Their service to the city and their opinion about a city issue that affects them becomes more important than their address. And I think that that was a, what I'm going to call a politrink. That was a power play and a political move on your part. And, you know, you and I have had some not-so-nice experiences. When you want to, you act like rough and tumble, Madam Chair Jane Seymour. But when you don't get your way, all of a sudden, you want to back down and act like Little Miss Muffet intimidated by everything. And you need to be consistent with your persona that you're going to give me and the public. Now, let's talk about Carpenter Lake again. If you remember, I stated at the beginning of the year how this city was not frugal with their spending. We had an opportunity to buy Carpenter Lake for two hundred and fifty thousand... We had an opportunity to buy Carpenter Lake for two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars, and it's alleged that a member up there on council blocked that and had to turn the grant back in. And again, I stand to be corrected. At the time, someone else bought Carpenter Lake for two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars. Carpenter Lake was then sold back to the city of Southfield, or sold to the city, not back, correction, Pam Gerald. Sold back to the city, or sold to the city. Sold to the city for one million dollars. So we spent an extra seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars for Carpenter Lake, when we could have acquired it for two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars. Now, that extra seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand could have been an interpretive center, it could have been modifications, it could have been renovations, but no, we spent it because we had it. We had a budget surplus. Now, we are missing that seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars. Now, again, through the chair, Mr. Charette, I talked about the fact that it was purported that one of the acting chiefs was talking to some of the police officers, which was a violation of the good faith bargaining process. You were rude and loud to me. You tried to call attention to Pam Gerald because you guys got me labeled and stereotyped to be this level orange security threat. Well, I decided to dye my hair orange, so you won't forget that, or what I'm going to call chestnut, golden chestnut, and to also make me look a little softer, so at my height and my weight, that I won't appear to be threatening and intimidating. But all you said through the chair was that the acting chief wouldn't do it anymore. So we always talk about a standard, a manner in which we do things, policy and procedure, and we don't always do it. Now, these officers, we're talking about the grant, the grant for Carpenter Lake, but we got a two-point-two-million-dollar Saper grant that is still dangling, suspended animation. You're talking about the deadline for the Carpenter Lake grant. What about the firefighter deadline? We need police and fire and EMS, and not a nature center, right now. Didn't say it was a bad idea. People are not against it, but it's not imperative to the survival of this city. Now, let's talk about being intelligent, creative, and innovative, and to do that, we are not doing that. And lastly, I just wanted to also congratulate our city planner for being here, little over six months, less than a year, for his five percent pay increase. That's an insult to every single employee that has put time, effort, and sweat and tears into their positions, doing more with less, and they have not gotten a five percent pay increase. Now, in the famous words of our chair, to go against the Carpenter Lake after it was all decided, you said it was de-energizing and demoralizing. I think to give someone that hasn't paid their dues to this city a five percent pay increase is de-energizing, demoralizing, and it is putting this city in a bad morale position. These employees are tired of doing more with less, while we're still spending money like we still got big fat pockets and giving out a five percent pay increase. I thought it was a pay freeze. How did this happen? Now, I know you're not going to answer me, which is fine. I don't need five minutes of fame. And to the residents, Ms. Joyce, Ms. Henry, and the rest of you that called me at home, and you know who you are, thank you for calling. Again, my number is two-four-eight-three-five-two-nine-one-eight-eight. And my little angel at the post office told me that my blessings come from the south and not the north. I am a daughter of the Most High God. I ask Him every time I get up here at this podium to order my words like He does my steps, and He does it. So thank you, my heavenly Father, for ordering my words like You do my steps.
Those are timeless, though. Thanks. Um, Mr. Karen Turner. Ms. Karen Turner is here.
Hi, everyone. Before I give my name and address, I just want to say to Ms. Jordan and the rest of the council that I've waited a long time. Some people are getting extra time. You did call a couple of people last meeting that I attended, but then you put in a request to speak, so there's an appearance that it may be subjective of who can go over and who can't. I'm going to try to keep this to five minutes as much as possible, but I just want to make it clear that it should have the appearance of people all the way around.
I told the community, but I was having trouble on my stopwatch.
Okay. And last meeting also, too, I had a person time me in the audience. I had rehearsed my speech at home very diligently, and the person keeping the time on me advised me I would just cut off after four minutes. So I'm going to start, my name is Stephanie English. I live at two-eight-seven-three-five-St. Carlos, Southfield, Michigan, four-eight-zero-seven-six, and I'd like the time to start from now. I'm here again to address the forty-plus time fraud embezzlement occurrences allegedly carried out by the current acting chief of police, Brian Gerald. Because the city administrator is appointed by and serves at the pleasure of the council members, he gets the pass tonight, and my notice is directly directed at the senior members and all other members of the council and the city attorney. I'm stating that the police chief appointment appears to be fixed or steered due to what is perceived as pressure or hard influence by two senior council members especially. I work diligently on behalf of officers who contacted me anonymously over the past four weeks to get their concerns of corruption to be properly investigated by an outside police agency, as required if a chief of police has to be investigated. The primary issues to consider are these. The calls I received over the past month were from officers who are very upset and worked up at the possibility of Chief Gerald being appointed as the permanent chief of police. I was very careful and very aggressive in determining if their statements were credible, and I did want to vet any of the information before I brought it forward. For the record, these are not individuals who have had any discipline issues. These issues who I've, these individuals who I've spoken with are stressed at the potential of an individual who they deem as unethical or without integrity or low integrity to lead them. They sought out any community members they thought would be able to push their deep concerns forward, and aggressively. As I had stated before, I did not ask for this type of responsibility. But our police officers are very important assets of our community, and their concerns are warranted, be based on hard evidence from a respected police lieutenant, for us to fully support, where that evidence will fully support all of the allegations against Chief Gerald. I have in my possession a confidential memo written by Chief Gerald, which states his admission that he conducted his own investigations pertaining to these time fraud allegations, and that he went into and changed his own records. This document was dropped inside of my screen door. I cannot determine, but it was between the dates of November twenty-eighth and December first. As I asked at the twenty-eighth meeting, November twenty-eighth meeting, if an investigation had been done, and I was, Sid Lance told another speaker and myself, but the other speaker, that he admonished and told that this full investigation had been done, when I asked the results of this, when I asked who conducted it, no answers were given. I advise that it was highly improper and illegal for a person of that position to investigate himself, and if it had been done so, it is illegal and improper. When I asked these questions directly to the council, no one gave me an answer. But I suspect now it's potentially possible that you all had this memo already in hand, and that's why no one responded to my questions. The other important issue is that there is an appearance of a conflict of interest with the city attorney, Jack Barris, or Sue Ward, to answer my FOIA request, which some of the FOIA requests have been denied, but some have been granted, or any other inquiry that I'm doing on behalf of the police officers, because Chief Gerald's wife was the executive assistant to our city attorney, and perhaps a personal or professional friend of both of the attorneys, which could be deemed as a reason that proper vetting or elimination of Brian Gerald as a police chief candidate wasn't done. This appears to be a vehicle to suppress or cloak evidence that would eliminate Chief Gerald as a chief of police candidate for the city of Southfield, or to even punish or terminate him for proof, for any proof defenses of time embezzlement. I'm putting the council and the law department on notice that you have a moral and spiritual responsibility to the citizens of Southfield and to the police personnel to fully and fairly investigate this matter, and to clear any path of potential obstruction or influence, so our city administrator can proceed with the proper action without pressure from who he reports to, which is you, the council. Let him, let our city administrator act with the high moral standards that I trust him to carry out. This issue is serious, and I'm asking the council to please not let our business activity and our city ethics mirror communities such as Detroit, Wayne County, Ingers, High Park, and most recently Penn State, where corruption and other ethical standards have been exhibited.
But the time has up, please. Thank you.
Are there any questions pertaining to this?
No. Good job.
I am going to read a response regarding this matter, because I want to run here. This stems from a city administrator to all the mayor and city councils with regard to this situation. In detail, I'm going to read it. "A detailed review of expressed concerns regarding time recording of an individual in the Southfield Police Department was initiated. Pertinent records were reviewed, as well as general principles of scheduling and time allocation applicable to professional managerial personnel who do not receive overtime compensation. This review resulted in the following findings. The reporting process and procedures were consistent among the deputy chiefs. Number two, a minor discrepancy was found and was corrected, resulting in thirty-two hours of vacation being removed from the employee's vacation bank on October first, two thousand and nine. Number three, a change in payroll record-keeping procedures was instituted to avoid similar recording errors in the future. These record-keeping issues were investigated in two thousand and nine by then-chief, chief Dr. Joseph E. Tomp, who made the determination that any error was inadvertently made, and that thirty-two hours would be appropriate adjustments to the employee's vacation bank. And number five, there was no violation of police department policy on the use of city vehicles. The view from the broader context is of utmost importance. All parties can rest assured that the Southfield Police Department continues as a leading department in the region and throughout the state. Our policies and procedures, excuse me, are frequently used as best practices, models, and training seminars, and we are acclaimed by law enforcement experts at the department that enforces the law with sensitivity to the rights of all parties. Claims against the city are at a twenty-year low as a result of the respectful diligence and high standard of conduct of our outstanding police officers. The view from the street is obviously a good one. Citizen complaints are extremely rare." It's respectfully submitted by James Charette, Charette, to the administrator.
What is that date?
That's right.
What is the date of that? What is mine?
Uh, December first, two thousand and eleven. All right, we're going to, Ms. Cynthia Hosker? Ms. Cynthia Hosker, not, not here. Samuel Kuziggin III. Um, I think it's from this, Kelly King. Not present. Uh, Mr. Damon Bryant. Mr. Nick Kazan. Not present, uh, she, she's not here. Pass, uh, Olden Baker. Did I make, made a mistake?
She said he wasn't here. She didn't pronounce, she didn't pronounce his name. She said he wasn't here.
All right, Matthew Huber. Matthew Huber. Chief, I'm not sure if I'm saying this, Tufen, Tufen? Apparently not here, Mr. David Adams. I don't have here. Uh, that includes our communications portion. Any other business coming toward the council?
I just wanted to wish everyone happy holidays, and safe holidays, and look forward to the new year.
I think we're all joining that. I see other, other business, I suppose, coming in.